Many of us know that there is a special session that will be starting on July 18th. Our next Weekly Witness will be the day before, so Monday, July 17th. And during that episode, we'll be talking specifically about issues that are going to be coming up in the special session. We're going to try to stay focused today on our legislative wrap-up. But before we get there, there are a couple of announcements related to the special session. First, Texas Impact during the regular session did not talk a lot about what folks referred to as the bathroom bill. We talked about it being a distraction for more important issues that were coming up, like foster care or public education, and so we didn't work on it during the regular session. That being said, if you watched our episode, our last episode of Weekly Witness, B. Moore Heder, Executive Director, talked about this being one of the 20 issues that were on the call for the special session. And because our membership keeps asking us about this issue, and because some state leaders talk about the influence of people of faith being one of the reasons that we need the quote-unquote bathroom bill, Texas Impact during the special session will be taking the position and working on this issue. And that's because, as people of faith, discrimination is not something that is within our value system. Discrimination is not okay, and as Texans, we don't believe that discrimination is okay. And so we will be having a lot more information in weeks to come about this important issue. For now, there is a sign-on letter that was launched Monday evening on the front page of TexasImpact.org, and in the first about 24 hours, over 100 people had signed that letter. We would encourage you, if that issue is important to you, to go ahead and sign the sign-on letter at TexasImpact.org, but don't stop there. Go ahead and send it out to all of your networks that might be interested, encourage them to sign as well. We'd also encourage you to go ahead and start calling your legislators on this issue to let them know that you feel that discrimination is not a faith value. You can find those toll-free numbers on the Weekly Witness page at TexasImpact.org/WeeklyWitness. We encourage you to go ahead and share those numbers and start calling today. Also, go ahead and save the date. There will be, on August 1st, an opportunity for people of faith to come have their voices heard on that issue. So we'll be sending out more information on that, but go ahead and save the date for August 1st at the Texas Capitol. If you have any questions about that, you can go ahead and email me at Scott@TexasImpact.org, or keep an eye on the Texas Impact social media and website for more information, or make sure you're signed up for the Texas Impact Rapid Response Team to receive up-to-the-minute updates. You can sign up for the Rapid Response Team at TexasImpact.org/take-action. So that's what's coming. We want to spend the bulk of the time today talking about what happened during the course of the last legislative session. I've got two guys who basically lived in that building for the 140 days. I've got some questions that were submitted in advance, and we're just going to start having a conversation. So I'm going to start with Ahmad, because it was his first time to work on the Texas legislative session, and I'm going to go ahead and... Josh is laughing because it was a great one to start with. We're going to go ahead and start with your opening thoughts. As you look back on the legislative session, you've now had a couple of weeks hopefully to catch up on rest. What do you think? What are your opening thoughts in reflecting that?
So, first opening thought, having a baby during the session, probably not the easiest of times to have a baby, but we did have one in April.
Congratulations.
Thank you. He's too much older than me.
Yeah, time that better makes time.
Yeah, I'll think about that. Okay, so this was my first session, and going into it, you know, B., Josh, and Beeman told me, "This is going to be, this is going to be an interesting session. It's going to be, there's going to be a lot of difficult parts of it. Legislation is going to take a long time to get passed." Like, just be aware. So I was like, "What should I do in order to prepare for the session?" And they kept on saying, "You just have to go through it. You have to, you have to, you have to go into the Capitol, you have to see it, you have to work it. There's really no describing what it's going to be like," and that turned out to be true. Because every time I would have a plan for the day, I would go into the building thinking that I was going to meet, you know, a certain number of offices, or, you know, go to a certain hearing, that plan would change in the first hour that I got into the building. So no day was like another, and every plan that I had, just sort of, it was really up to whatever needed to get done that day. So it was kind of hectic, it was really, really fascinating. At times, it was really difficult, and Josh is going to talk a little bit about the beginning of the session, so I think I'll wrap around back to some of what he's going to talk about after he says his thoughts.
Josh, this was not your first rodeo.
No, but the one thing to be prepared is walkout, starting around Labor Day, because it is a marathon, and it'll wear you out. I had a baby, we had a baby, my wife had a baby, actually. Yeah, that happened at the end of October, so yeah, November, December, we went into it, I was starting out tired, so it's interesting having small children in the legislature. Switching gears to the back of the dumpster fire, here's why that's appropriate, I think. I'm going to work back, because often you remember what happened most recently in your memory. So the very last day of the special session, we called signing out, I got another day in Latin, it's fun to say things in Latin. There was a shoving match on the House floor, and some threats, both sides accusing the other side of issuing a threat. Anyway, here's what we know of it. We know that there was a big protest over the Sanctuary Cities Bill that had already passed and already been signed into law. They were disrupting the gallery, and it is fully within the rights of the chamber to equip the gallery. As the gallery was being cleared, one of the, well, a state legislator named Matt Mulligan walked up to a couple of Latino legislators and said something to the effect, I can't remember exactly what it was, but I've just called ICE on them. And I think it has since been ferreted out by the media who investigated it, that it's true, ICE was called. But the immediate reaction of the Latino legislators was, "This is exactly what we said, this is the profile that we suspected this bill would have," and they lost their cool. And part of, I mean, part of the losing of the cool, if you will, the anger, was, I mean, I'll be honest, I was surprised it took to the very last day before a fight occurred. There had been enough things happening deep on the inside that I was shocked that it hadn't happened sooner. If you back up, we'll do back to Memorial Days, back into April, that's when you had the Sanctuary Cities debate on the House floor. It was widely believed that the House was going to fix and make workable what was otherwise a very draconian and partisan bill that the Senate had lobbed over at the legislature. In fact, I had been telling a lot of people before session began, we did a lot of legislative trains and lobby trains before session began, with different constituencies of ours, that it was going to be a lot like a medieval war movie, where the Senate was going to be catapults, and the House was going to be castles, and the Senate was going to be catapulting pleniballs of tar and diseased corpses over into the House, and the House was going to have to contend with that. And what I meant by that was, it was all part of the kind of primary narrative, that one chamber was going to try to create against the other chamber. And so what you have in Texas is kind of, as far as I know, unique in state legislatures, where you have one party controlled by the traditional wing of the Republican Party, which is the House, and the other chamber that is controlled by the Tea Party wing, the insurgent wing of the Republican Party. And you really have this whole narrative playing out all session, and it came out in the Sanctuary Cities Bill. So you had, it was widely believed to be a House to fix it, and then it didn't turn out that way. So there's a group of 12 extreme legislators on the far right called Freedom Caucus, and we're going to talk about them, they're a recurrent thing that we've been talking about. The Chair of its name, Representative Matt Schefer, he proposed an amendment, and so what he proposed was to move the Sanctuary Cities Bill. The House had said, "Well, we're not going to inquire about immigration status until an arrest is incurred." So at that point, you're being booked for a crime that law enforcement has probable cause to believe you committed. This is a more appropriate place to have this inquiry made. But the amendment was to move it back to the point of lawful detention, and to kind of articulate in non-legal terms the lawful detention meaning, if you go through the metal detectors of the Capitol and you set the machine off, you're being lawfully detained while they wind you down, because all it requires is the officer to be able to state an articulable fact for having a reasonable suspicion that you committed a crime. And it may turn out that you did, but the machine wouldn't beam is the articulable fact on that particular situation. There's situations that involve law enforcement responding to domestic disputes in the home, where often they detain everybody while they show what happened.
So that includes witnesses?
And includes witnesses, and includes victims, and that's not just limited to domestic disturbance as any crime for that matter, office and law. Well, often, law enforcement shows up at the scene and will detain a bunch of people, even in zip ties for that matter, until they can ascertain the situation, because they're trying to get the situation under control. So their traffic stops are low attention as well. I thought your license plate was out, lawfully detained. So this is a very low bar that's going to cause a high level of fear in the community. And it was really the bill. I mean, it was really the difference between a draconian bill and one that is not great, but would have less fear in the community. And that amendment went on...
The legislator said it in one, during testimony, "This is the bill."
Okay, the Chair of State Affairs got up and said, "Look, this is, this amendment, there were quite a few amendments, I mean, 30, 40, I can't remember the number, but there were double-digit numbers of amendments in this bill." And this, this one was the amendment that was the bill for all intents purposes. And what you saw was a complete meltdown for about three hours of the debate while this amendment was being debated. There were attempts to kill the bill through parliamentary tricks and all that. Long story short, what you had was, coming out of this debate, a real kind of breakdown in the House. The final vote was something like 81 to 60-something, and it was a really close vote. And it was surprising to a lot of insiders, a lot of insiders thought the center would hold. They thought that the Strauss faction of the Republican Party, especially some of the chairmen that were appointed by the Speaker, who in theory should be loyal to the Speaker, wouldn't be able to defeat this amendment, and they were not. And that exposed the thing about the House that really became the theme for the rest of session. And you also saw even more fractiousness than that. What you saw was, in that two and a half hours where it was melted down, was both of the parties went in the caucus. And then within the parties, you saw the divisions of the Democratic Party come out, the divisions of the Republican Party come out, and there was a deal on the table and a lot of finger pointing by all kind of four factions, if you will, the Tea Party, the traditional Republicans, and then also kind of the more hardliners in the Democratic Party and those that were trying to make a deal to make it think that it was going to be bad, less bad. And you see a lot of finger pointing about whose fault it was this very day, everybody blamed somebody else for that amendment getting stuck on. But you could even back it up before that. In March, there was House Bill 4, which wasn't an immigration bill at all, it was a foster care bill. And in theory, it should have been a very conservative bill, because it's actually a kinship care bill, where you're attempting to keep kids with their families, which is a conservative area. And in doing so, it actually would cost the state less money than putting a kid in foster care. And one of the biggest barriers to kinship care was that the state had given zero money to grandparents or uncles or siblings who's old enough and 18 years old or older. And there was no support for being able to take care of those children in the home. And so that was a big barrier for a lot of families to be able to otherwise take children they wanted to have to keep in the family. So what the bill did is it provided a level of funding that was still a lesser amount than the cost of keeping a kid in foster care. So in theory, fiscally conservative, family, you know, keeping families together, in theory, this is a very conservative bill, but one alternative immigration bill, where they proposed, there was an amendment proposed by Representative Keough that no money would go to illegal immigrants on this thing. And so really, the issue of immigration suddenly became more important than like the cost to the state that would incur, the additional cost by having the children of people who were potentially undocumented put in foster care. So it was a really weird cognitive moment in the Republican Party about whether the racial politics of immigration or the fiscal conservatives that we was going to prevail. And they eventually convinced this legislature to pull this amendment down, but at that point, it was very clear, this was one of the first big bills that the House faced in March, when things moved out of committee at the floor. This was a major bill, it was House Bill 4, and it turned into this very big fight that kind of showed insiders how the rest of the session was going to operate. But you can see it happening even before that, in January. So there was a, in January before any committees, in the meeting before committees were even named, there was a big fake committee. Just for fake news, there was a literal fake committee, where one of the new freshmen, named Al Beadham, and members of the Freedom Caucus, I don't know if they had actually formed yet to be a Freedom Caucus, but they were all the eight or nine or so members who sat on the dais with him, held this event that was dubbed originally a Homeland Security Hearing, in which expert testimony would be taken on the issue of terrorism. And of course, if you Google the expert witnesses, they were not experts, they were the small cadre of people who go around the country stirring up fear about the Muslim community.
And this event was held after the mosques and student groups, Muslim student groups across the state received a letter, which was actually a survey from the representative, asking personal beliefs about their religion. So, you know, we had mosque parties.
And it was alluded to, it being connected to Texas Muslim Capitol. I mean, I can't remember the exact wording, but you could read it, and misinterpreted to mean...
I think it said, yeah, there was some exact wording that made it seem like it was an official Muslim Capitol Day survey that you should fill out before you come to the Capitol.
So given our constituency, we had been involved in this thing, because we had written a letter to all the mosques and student associations that we had access to, to say, "Don't respond to this thing, this is wildly inappropriate for a legislature to be asking." And then he doubled down on that by having this event that he called a Homeland Security Hearing. There's a few small problems with that. One, there's an actual Homeland Security Committee in the House.
That's problem one.
And it's not the chairman of it. And problem number two is, under law, he has no authority to put anybody under oath. Only Chairman, actual Chairman of actual committees have the authority to do that, and he was making misrepresentations that he was going to be doing that by saying expert testimony.
And then expert testimony, a lot of them were known instigators, right? People who had access to grind and...
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, it'd be like if you asked Christopher Hitchens or Richard Dawkins to opine about the Christians, people who clearly were either, yeah, who had an extra practice of faith. And like I said, if you Google the so-called experts, they were small cadre Islamophobes that are well-known to us who watch that kind of thing. And so anyway, the event did happen anyway, and it happened in one of the committee hearings. So when the media is there with cameras taking pictures, the representative is sitting in the chair of the seat with the people, the so-called experts, and sitting at the table where you're going to make testimony, and eight or nine members of the Freedom Caucus, the most extreme wing, sitting up there with him with their official House nameplates, the State Seal of Texas behind him, and he's recognizing people to ask questions of the witnesses as if it was an actual committee. It was a complete fake committee. And so that happened in January, I mean, that was one of the first events of the 85th legislature. But I got to take you back one more spot. I got to take it back to March 2016. This is the primary.
I was still at school at that point.
Yeah, this is the primary. If you want to know why any of this happened, if you want to know why any of the big overview of session of why this happened, you have to go back to March 2016. 95% of the state legislature is elected in the primary. There's 181 House, or 181 legislative seats, 150 in the House, 31 in the Senate. Of the 150 in the House, seven are in play come November in the general election. Maybe one isn't played in the Senate come November. Otherwise, they're all drawn in such a way as to be safe districts for whatever party to protect the company. And so this, this is both parties, the race that they're most worried about, 95% of them, is the March primary, not the November general election, because they largely can predict, I mean, past behavior is indicative of future behavior. And so it's really, with the computer technology, pretty easy to draw these district lines in a way that's very predictable. And part of that is there's such a low turnout, not just in the November general election, there's exponentially lower turnout in the primary. I mean, maybe 3% of the state elected firmly went in in the primary runoff and said, "I want Ted Cruz to be US Senator 2012." Fewer than 3% went in in 2014 and said, "I want Patrick Reed to be governor." There is that low turnout in these primaries where 3% of the potential age population can determine the outcome. And so that is what they are worried about, they are worried about those extremely low turnout primaries. They're not worried about the November general election in large, because the seats just aren't that competitive. People who vote tend to vote, and people who don't vote tend to never vote. And they are able to kind of largely predict, based on past performance, those districts. And so really, that is what is creating the energy and what is driving the policy conversation in that building.
So I'm 99% sure that we're going to hear a lot more about that in the months to come, post-special session, as we lead towards election season again. And you just reminded me how bad it was during the legislative session. I feel like I slept a little since then, and it's all coming back to me now. Talk for a few minutes, both of you if you will, about some accomplishments you feel like the Texas Impact community, the Weekly Witness community accomplished during the course of the legislative session.
Yeah, I mean, even in, so even in the worst session, there are always small, small things that get accomplished. And sometimes accomplishments are also frustrating, but we'll start with the ones that are kind of, let's be positive. There was more money for mental health. By and large, there was a lot of progress made on our mental health that built on the progress made in the 84th. And you can largely credit Speaker Strauss to that, that's a thing that he has prioritized and the House as a whole has prioritized for a couple sessions in a row. We have kind of worked on the nexus of mental health and criminal justice, and so you saw, because people get it, we're using our present systems of mental health hospitals, which is ridiculous and not cost-effective, but not effective for people in there, for anybody. So there were a couple, a couple of small but important bills that made it through on mental health. Ahmad, can you talk about the blacklist bill a little bit, now that it's signed?
Yeah.
And I'll talk about some other accomplishments, too.
So there...
We need to talk about that a little.
Yeah, SB 253 was a 30-page state investments bill. It would, the bill amended a section of the code that decided, that would state for Texas which companies and which countries they could do business with. And hidden on page...
Oh, buried about two-thirds of the way in.
Page, you know, two-thirds of the way into this 30-page bill was this small little paragraph, well, it was a, it was a section of the bill that said that the state could not invest in companies that had ties with foreign terrorist organizations. And in that section, it said, as a definition for a foreign terrorist organization, it was determined by the state's comptroller's office. And the state comptroller's office could take input on their designation from nonprofits, could take input from the State Department, the federal State Department, and, you know, research institutions.
Yes, so in federal law, I mean, just to kind of back up, in federal law, it's the state, it's the US State Department that determines whether somebody is a foreign terrorist organization or not. That's a federal thing, I mean, that's the whole apparatus of the federal government's intelligence networks and such.
That's their job.
The comptroller's office is the state, it takes account, they are not an intelligence agency.
Right.
And so first of all, they don't necessarily have the competent estimate of determination, and then they were going to gather evidence from nonprofits. So Texas Impact would be somehow competent to put forth evidence that some other organization was a foreign terrorist organization.
Any, or, there was, there was literally no standard for what could be a foreign terrorist organization. Any nonprofit could put their input in.
And they were going to publish it on the website of the comptroller's office, and it's going to be publicly made available. There was no appeals process, no ability to challenge whether or not you were a foreign terrorist organization, there was no ability to get your name taken off the list, I mean, there was no deprocess protection whatsoever.
If some nonprofit somewhere wanted to advocate for your organization to be put on this publicly listed state website, that could have happened.
Yeah, it was a block race. And it could have worked, and to be fair, it wouldn't, I mean, we were obviously concerned about how Islamophobes might use it against some Muslims in the state of Texas, but it could have worked in the opposite, I mean, indivisible, or, I don't know, somebody on the left could have easily made accusations about Russia and politicized it that way as well. And so anyway, I mean...
Yeah, and our business was, we didn't really necessarily have a position on who or what the state invested in. We really just wanted to make sure that potential abuses and infringements on rights were limited through that language.
Yeah, and I, I, I mean, so anyway, to give the benefit of the doubt to the author, I mean, once it kind of got raised...
Oh, yeah.
The Senate quickly got that provision out of there and it built fast, you know, easy, because no one else had a position whatsoever, or should have. But, I mean...
But it was a, it was a, it was a small fix, but a really, really important one. And it got fixed very quickly, it got fixed very quietly, which is great.
Yeah, we didn't want to talk about it until the signing period was over.
Yeah, and now it's been shut into law.
Just paranoia, I'm going to get a lot of this, being paranoid, making sure that that got fixed, but that's a small fix. There was a completely changing subject, there was a small, a bill having to do with a raffle bill, let me back up and say it. So one of the ways that we pay a living was kind of a failure, but often, we try to address that issue through supply side, and another was trying to fix the product itself. But there was a small bill that was helping to work on it, to reduce the need for paying loans, by encouraging people to save their own money in open savings accounts. 25% of the state is underbanked, I think it's even lower, I can't remember the number, but a good number of people in the state just don't lose a bank account whatsoever. And so I was trying to incentivize people to use banks and to save their own money, because that's the best offense to not having to use a payday loan, is to be able to save their own money. We had a bill, Representative Eric Johnson proposed a bill that we supported, and supported for a couple sessions, that would allow banks and credit unions to be able to experiment with, and other states have done this as well, quite successfully, to then, so whenever you make a monthly deposit, your name, you are entered into a raffle, where they give a prize drawing at the end of the month, like a lottery, only it's not like a lottery, because you get to keep your own money. You're not putting it at risk. So you're making monthly deposit, and there's going to be a raffle, and there's a prize getting away at the end of the month. And so it's encouraging you to make a monthly deposit and save your own money. It was vetoed last session, even though it passed with very vocal opposition last session. It was vetoed because of a legal argument by the governor that it constituted gambling. Texas does have a pretty broad definition of gambling, we didn't think it was, but we're opposed to gambling as an organization, and we support this bill. Nevertheless, this time around, we did a constitutional amendment, HJR, to amend the constitution, so you'll be able to vote on that in November, if you're going to support it. There was another accomplishment that I think was really important, we called it the Penn State Amendment. So switching subjects again to foster care, late, late hour, and this is for value of having somebody watching a lot of times, maybe it's about 9:00, 10:00 PM, or, I don't remember what night of the week it was, but it was a late night amendment in the Senate, and you got to watch late night amendments in the Senate. And this was one, where they stuck an amendment on a bill that was going to grant immunity from civil liability to providers that provide foster care. And the way it was written, we called it the Penn State Amendment. And if you remember the Penn State scandal, what the amendment allowed was, so the Penn State Amendment affects the Penn State scandal, for those who may not have followed it to sports. There was a guy named Jerry Sandusky, and he sexually abused children for many years, and the Penn State program very much covered that actively. And so the way this amendment was written, without giving you the difference between gross negligence and ordinary negligence, the way this amendment was written is Jerry Sandusky would have been simply liable for it for his actions, and the state would not do it. And so what this was going to do was inoculate the providers from the action they're employees. And we thought that was wildly important to do, because a lot of malfeasance can be had, that does constitute gross negligence. And so we called it the Penn State Amendment, we worked with other stakeholders in trying to strip this amendment off. It took several days of going around educating people on it, just to get it pulled off, but we got it pulled off, and that's the thing. We had some compromise languages to affirm that there's already in Civil Practice Reform Code, the community, to any charitable organization, any nonprofit, Chapter 84, Civil Practice Reform Code. So we had a compromise, we just clarified that, you know, any foster care provider was under Chapter 84, we thought that was already true, but if it makes me feel better to put it in law, great. So we got a compromise on that, and got the Penn State Amendment pulled out, so I was very happy about that. So there's just some things that are not in the online version, the ribbon version of our wrap-up that we can kind of go into.
I know one of the things I'm most proud of this last legislative session was the work that you all, the Weekly Witness community, did... was the work that you all, the Weekly Witness Community, did both here and online. A rep responded, folks made over 5,000 telephone calls on issues that Texas impact and people of faith found to be important. I know there were a couple of bills that they worked on specifically that were accomplishments. Do you want to talk for a second about a couple of those?
Yeah, so we talked a lot when we would do our kind of weekly hot list. There were three bills we talked a lot about. They all had to do with continuous eligibility, which is a policy term for whenever somebody's on medic... A child is on Medicaid or chip, how they go about getting renewed. So one of the things the state does that's to cut the rolls is they make parents renew their kids every six months in order to trip them up, as opposed to every year manually. And another shenanigan they'll do is that all the kids, so the parents would have multiple children, but all the children won't be renewed at the same time. It'll be, so instead of every six months, it can be every two months a parent is having to renew one of their child's chip for healthcare. Couple of those bills didn't pass. But, so we worked a lot on community eligibility. The one that did pass was House Bill 337, which unfortunately didn't help children. But it did help with people that go to prisons. This is a mental health bill, really. So when people would go into the county jail, or prison for that matter, the state could picture, they would lose the... They would cancel or terminate, I believe, the Medicaid, their Medicaid route. And the problem is, is that they would receive mental health treatment while in prison. But then when they were released from prison, there was a great big onerous blockade to getting that Medicaid renewed. And so in the meantime, upon being released from prison and having Medicaid renewed, you would often have weeks go by where you're not having mental health treatment. And you couldn't get the meds if you wanted. Some of them didn't want to take their medication, so they couldn't take their medication because they didn't have access to it. So one of the bills that did pass was House Bill 337, which we all made a lot of calls on. That made it to where it was just suspended and not terminated, so that it could be instantly put back in place upon somebody's release from prison or jail. Sounds common sense, it was a huge lift. The reason I'm going to mention those other bills is that all these bills I'm talking about passed the House. The one for children being renewed, the one for prisoners being renewed, passed the House pretty easily. They hit a roadblock in the Senate. They got stuck and sent in Health and Human Services, and whether that was the chairman, the lieutenant governor, it's kind of murky as to who exactly was responsible for that staying in committee. But right at the very end of session, the last winning day, there were a lot of calls we had made. Y'all called, the counties called, mental health community advocates called, doctors called, law enforcement called. I mean, it took a lot to get this bill moved out of committee and passed in the Senate. But the one having to do with prisons did. And that's going to be a pretty big savings to local communities. Because, I mean, they were paying for that recidivism, and people were going back into prison because they would have a mental health crisis. And they had the mental health crisis because they couldn't continue the treatment that they had gotten when they were in prison, and which is just ridiculous. So that was one good thing that y'all certainly helped dislodge. There are others that are escaping my memory.
Yeah, detention center licenses.
Oh, yeah, so that was a good one that didn't pass.
Yeah.
Baby Jains, that's the name. This was the one where unaccompanied minors, or they're in there, sometimes they were with their mom, would come over. And these are people fleeing South America, Central America, they are fleeing violence. They really are asylees. And so in that sense, it's not an illegal immigration issue. They are asylees that have legal protections under the law. They appear on the border, they turn themselves in immediately, and Border Patrol lists them away to now what are called detention centers. And what they are is they're prisons that have been converted to childcare facilities. So there's been federal litigation or a decision. How long can you hold a family in detention? And because they're not licensed as childcare facilities, which the judge reasoned, federal judge reasoned, that they need to be released as soon as possible. Of course, that means that private prison companies that run these detention centers aren't making as much money as they'd like to make. So they wrote a bill and put it in both chambers, and it passed the Senate. Went all the way through the Senate and the House, and was moved to allow them to be licensed as childcare centers. They're prisons, so that's why we call them baby jails. But really, they wanted to be called childcare centers, so that they can hold people in detention longer to get more money from their federal counters. Luckily, from many calls from people like you, that bill did not get out of House committees. And that is where gracefully ended here, grateful that it died in House committees.
We did get two questions online. Thanks, Jeff. I'll also go ahead and remind everybody that we are still taking questions in the comment section of Facebook Live, in the chat section of the webinar, which is on the bottom of the screen, the bubble-looking button. Maybe it's because it's the day after a holiday, those questions are coming in slower today than they were last week. But the two that we received online in advance. Could you give us more information about the content of the religious freedom amendments that were attached to the four sunset bills?
Yeah, so one of the things of the... We talked about the Freedom Caucus a little bit, the most extreme 12 members of the Texas House. One of... Once that, so going back to the Shaffer Amendment on Sanctuary Cities Bill, once it was exposed that a lot of House members were afraid to take votes in public, that just became the theme all session long. So they proposed these religious freedom amendments to sunset bills. Let me back up and explain what sunset bills are. About every 12 years or so, every state agency goes through a sunset bill. And so what we're looking, what the state is looking at is kind of, okay, now that's been over a decade, how is your agency operating? Is it operating as efficiently as it could be? Does it need to exist? Is what it was doing what it needs to be doing, what should it be doing in the future? Big, broad bills on very broad subject matter. So the State Bar, Board of Law Examiners, which is similar, Board of Nursing, and Board of Pharmacy, we're all four sunset bills looking at these whole boards. And so what were proposed with these four amendments, and every one of them was written a little bit different, and every one of them conflicted with existing Texas Religious Freedom Restoration Act. Let me back up to 1999, and we passed the Texas Religious Freedom Restoration Act. It has been a model for how a state should do a religious freedom restoration act. They've been in the news a lot lately, because the religious right is trying to rewrite them. They're trying to rewrite them because they didn't get what they wanted back in 1999, when they had broad consensus from the entire faith community. In 1999, there was a broad statewide process, a big coalition of 50 different faith groups who all agreed. It struck a proper balance between individual rights and the individual rights of third parties, where you can't impose your religion on somebody else. And a lot of these amendments, fast forward into 2017, would disrupt it. So the law on the Board of Pharmacy offices. A thing has often arisen where pharmacists don't want to give certain forms of birth control to people with a valid prescription, because they have religious projections to giving birth control to someone. It's a lot like the wedding cake issue, if you're familiar with that, where I am a religious person who doesn't want to give you a thing you were legally and lawfully entitled to because, you know, my religion. Well, wait a minute, now your religion is opposing on somebody else's religion. And that is inappropriate, a balance to be struck. So there were these four bills that had these amendments attached to it that were all a little bit different, and they all conflicted with existing law, and it was going to cause a big problem. Big thank you to Senator Watson. When these bills got in the Senate, he was authoring one of the State Bar, which of course regulates every attorney in the state. And so that was helpful to have a big, powerful constituency of attorneys who were going to be affected by this thing for cover for people. And so what they were able to work out was the accomplishments. And what the final version that came out of the accomplished committee looked like was good. Essentially, it does not include the Texas Religious Freedom Restoration Act. It strikes, in fact, it basically references the Religious Freedom Restoration Act. It says that what we're talking about is, you know, that these four agencies have to comply with the Religious Freedom Restoration Act. Essentially, it references back to the existing code, it does not disrupt current law. It basically just says, current law applies to you, which we would have argued it already did. So in a lot of ways, these four amendments are now completely compatible with the existing Religious Freedom Restoration Act, which nobody really has a major issue with. So that was an actual really big win on religious freedom stuff.
The other question that came in online in advance relates to the wrap-up. In the Family Security section, asking about House Bill 4102 by Representative Viabe, asking what it means to crowdfund money.
You're younger than I am, and you want this one?
Sure. So anytime that you have... Let's just back up to this, what rape kit is. It's an evidence collection kit. And the state has a backlog of, like, a couple thousand, I think 3,000 is the estimate. And that last was taken in 2015, I think, something like that. I mean, there hasn't been an accurate number of that backlog in a really long time. And the state needs money in order to analyze these kits. What this bill does is that it allows people, when they apply for their driver's license, for an original one or to renew one, to donate at least a dollar to a fund that would let this, allow the state to analyze this backlog of rape kits. So that's what the crowdfunding aspect of it is. It's anybody going in, it's a donation, basically, which means that there isn't enough state funds to analyze these rape kits. So the people are coming to crowdfund essentially this system. And you see crowdfunding online for other things, Kickstarter, and GoFundMe, and these kinds of things are also called crowdfunding. This is setting up a donation whenever you apply for your driver's license.
The question you should ask yourself is, why are we having to crowdfund to test rape kits in the first place? That's astounding to me, that the state can't just cough up the money to do the BNA testing and other evidence testing that they do in order to try to enforce the law against people who are sexually assaulted.
This is enforcement of law, this is also exoneration for people who are falsely accused. These are, there's a lot of enforcement.
So that's a good segue to frustrations, can we talk about...
Actually, before that, is this a new concept? Have we heard of crowdfunding state services anywhere else? Is this a new movement?
I don't know.
I'm not going to hear this is state service.
I don't know. I haven't studied crowdfunding essential government services.
Yeah, I was... We did talk about accomplishments earlier. Frustrations from the legislative session that we haven't gotten to yet.
I'll start with one. The one that keeps sticking in my mind is a bill that I thought was, and I think a lot of people thought, was very straightforward. It would have required schools to test their water systems for lead. There were two bills. One of them required remediation of the lead in the water system if lead was found.
In other words, the school district would have to fix it.
They would have to fix it. Another bill didn't require it, but it did require schools to test for lead contamination.
And then inform parents.
And then that was a key aspect of that.
Which is theory, the democratic process at the local level.
Once parents are informed of lead contamination, I doubt that there's going to be a little inaction on that. They wouldn't be comfortable with their kids drinking lead out of the water conduits. You know, there was a lot of support for this bill, and I really thought that it was going to, at least get out of the Calumbers Committee. But it got caught up in there and got stuck in that one. I was, I really wanted that one to go through. I mean, there was a lot of bills that I wanted to go through, but that one in particular...
Yeah, the Senate companion also got stuck on what is the Intend Calendar, which is actually the Senate calendar.
So it didn't get a vote, basically, on the floor.
My biggest one is probably public education. And that's honestly the state's biggest one, if you measure it with regards to money. The biggest thing the state does financially is public education. The biggest thing the state tax dollars go to, because there's a lot of federal funding that comes from healthcare, but it's almost entirely state tax dollars that go to public education. This one just ground out in a tail at their chambers. I mean, you have just two competing divisions, completely competing divisions. You have a House where a lot of rural Republicans support public education. And then you have a Senate that is led by Lieutenant Governor, who's assistant on privatizing public education through vouchers. And so House Bill 21 was a very good bill. That was the House version by the President, Chairman Huberty. That would have meant almost $2 billion, so 1.9 billion with a B, additional dollars to public education. And every school district would have seen more money of some kind. It also updated funding formulas that go into how we fund public education. That's very important for some rural districts. Because there are some rural districts who, when oil and gas prices were high, were doing very well. And now that oil and gas prices have dropped, they're looking at closing potentially some rural school districts because they couldn't get this fix done. When House Bill 21 cleared the House, got over the Senate, the Senate stripped the money out of it almost entirely. They cut 75% of the new money and left 500 million in there. Just to say that there was an increase, but really, they cut three-quarters of the increase. Where, and at that amount of money, not every district would have seen more money. And then they stuck the voucher provision in there, which of course would have diverted money from public education to private education, which just continues to choke off the public schools of money that they need as they continue to underfund public education. That was a nonstarter in the House, and that's what would have died.
So there was a floor debate on the amendments in the House on the voucher programs for... It was very specific, so it wasn't vouchers for everybody, it was vouchers for special needs.
Right.
And the proponents of that amendment, they were, you know, citing the needs of special needs kids to have these services. And the person at the other end of the podium, on the other end of the floor, Chairman Huberty, he himself has a special needs child. And so it was a really just a difficult debate to have.
Yeah, and here's the debate, they keep saying, well, it's not one-size-fits-all, and private schools may be better for certain kids. Well, public schools could do that if you gave them the money. They could probably do it more efficiently if you gave them the money. But we've been choking public education in the state for over a decade, session after session. Because, and I want to make a point with the budget here, because this budget doesn't keep up with population and inflation curve in the school system. So essentially, it is a reduction. It's not a numerical code to the amount of money. But if you keep the money the same, year after year, inflation happens. And Texas is a growing state, so more children happen. And they're being continually asked, the public school system is being continually asked, to do more with less. And they tend to pass with flying colors. But how long can you keep that up, being asked to do more with less? And there's been this narrative of new testing after new testing after new testing, and then it was TOS, and then it was TAC, and then it was STAR, and then it was end-of-course exams. And every time the public schools pass it, they think, oh, we'll even create a new test because we want to push this narrative within the schools. Well, no, they're not. In fact, even the Supreme Court opinion talks about how minority Hispanic and African Americans, their reading levels are much higher compared to the rest of the nation, even though we give so much less money to a public school system to do it with. So that's just a major frustration for me and a lot of people.
One that will continue to be discussed in months to come, I'm sure.
Yes, and I should note that more money for public education is not part of the... Well, there's not actually an official proclamation yet on the special session, but it is not one of the 20 things to be talked about.
Paul asks a question online, and I'm not sure, sitting around the table, we have expertise to answer today. But he says that his local county judge wrote an editorial in a local paper saying that SB 1 mandates that local property tax collections be increased by 7.04% in 2017 and almost 7% in 2018. This seems to ignore actual property valuations, is this correct?
I haven't heard that, but I would need to know a few more facts before I'd be able to say it was wrong. I just don't know. That is not a thing I have heard of. There's a lot of talk about property taxes that we have, was had, will be had, in the regular and special. I haven't heard that come up a lot.
Hey, Paul, why don't you go ahead and send us that editorial email to people, we'll take a look. Process question that came up from Kathleen, is there any recourse for overturning the veto?
In theory, yes, in reality, no. It has to do with how our constitution is written, and there's an amount of time that the legislature... an amount of time that the legislature can do it, but the problem is that they're not in session to do it, and that's often why governors will wait, uh, until after Sonny died to begin vetoing things, uh, so that the legislature can't come back and overturn vetoes. So in theory, in theory, yes, there's a procedure for doing so, in reality, it's not well-written, and it's able to be available.
Gentlemen, I think that's all we have from online. Do you have any closing thoughts before I close this out tonight?
How did you like the session, Josh?
It was the worst one I've been through, uh, and, and I'm, I'm the best person, I've, I've been this for about 12 years. I've talked to other, it's not that long, you know, lots of time.
That's what I was gonna say, it's relative. Every time I say, I'm, uh, you know, this is my first session, Josh, whenever he talks about his experience, he's like, yeah, I just started, and it's, you're fifth session of that?
Oh, uh, well, five was my first, so we.
Yeah, I got a long time before I, uh, started talking.
So, Mike, you can honestly say this was your best session, I guess?
Um, that is factually correct. I think it would be also factually correct to say that it was my worst session.
Yeah, well, we are lobbyists, and we is a, a very small world of people in the pink dome, uh, and there are people who have been around 30, 40, 50 years, and if you talk to them, they have called it kind of unprecedented. They've all said, almost, you know, almost, everybody's a little hard to talk to. As I said, this is unprecedented. This is an environment that they're not even sure how to work in, and they're, they're not entirely, uh, they're not happy with it, and they're not, they're not successful either. It's a very rough environment for, for various seasoned veterans.
And the two things that you mentioned, the, um, the Schaefer Amendment on SB4, which was the lawful detainment amendment, and then also the HB4 Amendment, um, for undocumented families, um, happening so early in March, those two things, I think, were jarring for, for people. I think people were expecting, we're not expecting those things to go down.
No, I was sitting in the House gallery for HB4, the very first bill, big major bill, where the immigration fight popped up with foster care. And the, the rhetoric, uh, the words that legislators used with each other in the debate, um, I mean, I was sitting next to a lobbyist who's one of those seasoned veterans I was talking about, been around 30, 40 years, and he goes, this is the kind of thing you heard in late May, that legislators say to one another, because you can't walk those things back. This is March, this is astounding.
Yeah, the, the, I think the other, the other takeaway for me, and again, I can look at this with fresh eyes, um, but, uh, the, I think transparency on the floor debates and by legislators about the influence of, uh, elections and primaries. You know, I think on SB4 in particular, we, we have that video, um, but it, you know, that being a factor in the policy discussion was so apparent when, uh, I don't think, I think in past sessions, Josh.
Yeah, it was often a thing, uh, insiders knew it, but it wasn't a thing you'd hear confessed, uh, on the floor. You would always have some at least attempt at to make a policy change. But you had legislators just admitting, uh, to the influence of properism.
Because sometimes it's hard to understand why the session was hard, and some of those are like tangible things that indicate, oh, this is why it was hard. Because especially for me, I didn't, I, I went in here not knowing what to expect. Um, so I, I think I learned a lot, uh, of the session, I'm really, really glad that I was able to, uh, experience this and learn from it.
Yeah, I mean, the link between elections and policymaking is sometimes hard for people, and people threw it forward in public in ways that were fascinating. Um, and that's the thing about, I mean, is government broken? Not, it's doing exactly what those that vote tell it to. It's working just fine, democracy. It's that this is what the, I mean, if the voters are gonna look in the mirror, if you're not a voter, you need to look yourself in the mirror. I mean, that's really the deal, right? I mean, it's very low participation, uh, especially knowing when the right race is where your vote is most effective.
Yeah.
There's a very low.
And I think election, I think November.
Right.
People think about, if I'm a Texan, when I think election, I have to think March.
That's right.
Well, and so, so to close this out today, I think we did have opportunities this legislative session as people of faith to look ourselves in the mirror and look at the narrative that was being drawn by the media throughout the state about what people of faith in Texas are saying. And it's important that we, as members of Texas Impact and as the different denominational and adjudicatory groups that we represent, to have our voice be heard. And I've been inspired by the way that you have participated in the process throughout this session, uh, the hundreds of people who participated in the rapid response team, the thousands of telephone calls that went in, and the challenge that I would have for us over the course of the next couple of weeks. And I'll use the, the sign-on letter related to the anti-discrimination piece of legislation that we're working on. In the first 24 hours, we had 100 people, uh, add their names to an online letter. My challenge for us is to not think about how we act on our own, but what if those 100 people who signed on each got another 100 people from their congregations, or 100 people from their local networks to also sign on? We've talked throughout Weekly Witness over the course of the last few months about, this is, this is a long game. Our journey towards the Kingdom of God and, and United Methodist, so in Westland language, our journey toward perfection might sometimes seem, seem long. Uh, but let's start that journey, and let's see how many more people we can get involved. Uh, we will be back for Weekly Witness on Monday, July 17th, here at the Murchison Chapel at First United Methodist Church, and we'll be here every Monday during the special session. We would encourage you to be here in person as often as possible. We'd especially encourage you to be here on August 1st for that, uh, for that day where we'll be having conversations about discriminatory legislation. But we'll also be online via Facebook Live and webinar. Keep an eye on Texas Impact's social media to figure out how you can get involved, and we will talk to you soon. Uh, thanks for tuning in today. Email us or email me at scott@texasimpact.org if you have questions. We'll look forward to seeing you soon. Thanks for all you do.